Yes, I can hear you.
Thanks.
So you stand, stand by the work? Pardon? Oh, really? You're an attorney, right? Pardon? Oh, I didn't know that.
It's Tony?
You run facilities or, I don't know what facilities you have?
Hospitals.
Okay, for what organization?
Well, I've been doing a lot of contract work lately for COVID, running COVID hospitals.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm back home right now, so that's good.
But that hasn't let up a whole bunch, has it? For you guys, that COVID?
Attorney.
Is that the new variation? So those of us that are vaccinated, should we get a third vaccine? They're not saying yet. I mean, you get a flu shot once a year. Is that, is COVID going to come along?
Okay.
Once a year, do you think, or become part of the flu shot?
It seems like it may.
I wonder, because it's not, obviously not going away. I don't know why I, I thought you were an attorney.
Nope. Can't pretend to be one.
Pardon?
Can't pretend to be one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's way, way outside of my scope.
There's Tony. Ex-counselman. Mayor.
Angela, we're getting broadcast whenever you are.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 18th, 2021 Regular Meeting at the City of Lincoln Planning Commission. Tonight, we will be conducting our meeting in person at the City Hall as well as virtually. So we have a bit of a hybrid meeting this evening. You can also watch tonight's meeting via the city's YouTube channel, access on the city's website, or Wave Channel 18. So welcome again, and I will officially call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cross. Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Manning.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Present.
And Chair McKinney.
Here. Thank you very much. We are now to item three, which is our Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice Chair Lyons, would you please lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
indivisible, with liberty for all, justice for all.
Little lag there.
Y'all got it.
Got it done.
Go confusion.
Thank you very much.
Just, just for the record, I want to make sure, because I didn't hear Mr. Mann, and my, my speaker might have cut out. I didn't hear Mr. Manning's name called. I want to just make sure for the record, we're clear that all seven are present.
Yes, he was called and he is present.
Great. Thank you. I just, I think my speaker might have cut out.
No worry, Christine. Thank you for checking. So we are at item four, Agenda Modification. I'd like to ask if anybody from the Commission or any staff members, if there are any items they'd like to modify on the agenda. Mr. Cross?
None from me.
Okay, I'm seeing none here. Anybody via Zoom on the Commission? Mr. Gilbert? Commissioner Gilbert? Commissioner Hutchinson?
None.
And Commissioner Manning?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay, and staff?
Chair, there are no agenda modifications presented by staff.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes item four. We are to item five, which is Residents Addressing the Commission. I want to remind everybody that if you are addressing the Commission, this is for any items that is not, that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you, if you want to address an item that is on tonight's agenda, we will do that during public comment period.
Well, I submitted a card to speak to Agenda Item Four, actually.
I just received it, Chair. Oh, okay. My apologies, so.
Okay. So.
Usually, we don't have the public modify the agenda. So if you'd like to speak under item five for any, you know, you're welcome to do so. We are on item five, and again, this is to address.
Okay, I, I thought the public could speak to any agenda item.
You, when we get to those agenda items, you will be allowed to speak to those. This particular item on our agenda is for any items that's not listed on the agenda.
I'm sorry. Just let me clarify. I understand, I'm on my way to sit down, but I wanted to speak to item four, and that was the one I submitted a card for in time. But I guess I'll be able to talk later.
Yes, yes, sir, you will.
The public can speak to any agenda item, is mine.
Yes, when we will, when we, for each item, we will open up public comment, and you will have an opportunity to speak to those items that are on tonight's agenda.
Well, we just missed one.
Item four is to modify the agenda, sir, and that is typically only done by staff or the Commission members and not the public.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Just disagree.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have concluded item five. We are now to item six, which is Disclosure of Expartee Communications. I will be asking each Commissioner if they have anything to disclose, starting with Commissioner Cross.
Yes, I met with representatives of the Village Five Project, and we had an open discussion about it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I too met with members from Village Five Project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
Yes, I also met with representatives from Richland Communities or whatever the developer name is now. I think it changed names along the way. But who is the, one of the applicants for Village Five?
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert?
I also met with the applicant for Village Five.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
I too met with the applicant for Village Five.
Commissioner Manning?
I had a Zoom meeting with the applicant for Village Five as well.
Thank you. And likewise, I as well had a Zoom or Teams meeting with the applicant for Village Five. Okay, we are now to Agenda Item Seven, which is our Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Commission or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. So I'd like to ask, do any Commissioners, would any Commissioners like, well, we have one item, so I guess we will not remove anything from this agenda. So we are okay to move this.
Do you have one hand raised?
Okay, thank you. Who is that?
Mr. Hoffler?
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to speak when it comes time on Village Five.
Yes, you will have that opportunity when that agenda item is brought forward. So we are currently, that is Agenda Item Eight C, and right now we are on the Consent Calendar, which is Item Seven. So does anybody want to remove the consent item for any discussion?
Chair, I have.
Colleagues, any Commissioners?
Sure, I have a speaker who would like to.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian, Shellbaum Drive. I would like to take this off consent for an explanation by staff. Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a request for that. Do any of my Commissioners, would they like to remove that? And we, well, we're going to. So I guess we need a presentation now from staff.
And now, well, Chair McKinney, there's two ways we can handle this. We could do the short staff report describing the item, and then ask for comments from the general public or answer any specific questions from the general public. So it would be your purview to determine which.
Let's do a very short presentation, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So Item C is the Design Review Application for Middle East Large Lot Three. It's for 83 single-family residential lots. The Design Review Packet entails four plans with three elevations each. There's a, and they range from 2,000 square feet to 2,700 square feet. And typically, the same conditions of approval we see on Design Review Applications are placed in this project. And I'm available to answer any specific questions regarding the project as well.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to ask if any of the Commissioners have any questions related to Item 7A? I don't see anybody here in the room online. Commissioner Gilbert, Hutchinson, or Manning, any questions? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any questions? I'll open this up for public comment. If there are any comments or questions about Item 7A from the public?
Just to thank you for that short explanation, I think I can probably visit the planning and find out more sometime. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anybody else in this room or online that would like to speak about Item 7A? Any hands raised, Angela? Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment and seek a motion.
Move adoption of Item 7A to Consent Calendar.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. May I have roll call?
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Manning?
Yes.
Chair McKinney?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. We are now to our public hearings. Our first item is Item 8A. This is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit and Specific Development Planning Commission Regular Meeting. I'm sorry, read this wrong. Conditional use permit, permit and specific development.
Plan.
Thank you. Plan permit for a private 1,600-square-foot recreation building with outdoor covered area and a pool within 12 Bridges Village 4A on Point 46 acres, a property zoned high-density residential. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair McKinney, thank you very much, and good evening, fellow Planning Commissioners. This is Rob Purge, Senior Planner. The Planning Commission for this item this evening is requested to do a couple of things. Determine that there are no further California Environmental Quality Act analysis as required by CEQA via Section 15183. Approve the conditional use permit for the recreation building and pool, and approve a specific development plan and development permit for the recreation pool. As the Commission may recall, back in early 2020, the city approved the 12 Bridges Village Four tentative map for a total of 320 high-density residential units. Village Four is proposed to be developed with private streets but will not be a gated community and include a homeowners' association. More recently, as the Planning Commission may recall, in July of 2021, the, the Commission approved the design of the single-family-style high-density residential development within this area. Currently, Regis Homes of the Bay Area is proposing to construct a 1,600-square-foot private recreation building with outdoor covered area and a pool on Point 46 acres. The community building is small in scale. It's a single-family building, or a single-story building designed to blend in with the neighborhood and the architectural character that was approved by the Planning Commission back in July. Simple roofline with gable and elements on all elevations, extensive use of vertical board and battened siding, and stucco on the exterior with a flat concrete tile roof will set the tone for the design of the building. Overall, the D R, the Designer Review Board members noted that the project is well-designed and will fit in with the surrounding residential neighborhood. The DRB members noted that the colors look good. Nothing major to point out, and that it will be a good fit for this area. Based on the review of the proposal with respect to the 12 Bridges General Development Plan, the project conforms with the approved citing criteria involving height, setbacks, architectural guidelines, building scale, colors and materials, and landscape character. And the DRB recommended approval of the design to the Planning Commission. The community building is proposed to be located on property that is zoned high-density residential for the 12 Bridges General Development Plan. Per the GDP, allowed and conditionally-allowed land uses are referred back to the city's municipal code. In this instance, the Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 18160203, allows for clubhouses in the high-density area subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. Along with the design aspects, the Planning Commission is required to make the four noted findings shown to you here and in the staff report. Staff determined that the proposed use is appropriate in the high-density residential zoning as a conditional use with the appropriate conditions, and it will not be detrimental to health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city. Supported by the analysis in the staff report, staff determined that the project is consistent with the general plan, the municipal code, and the 12 Bridges General Development Plan. The Designer Review Board also recommended approval of the project to the Commission with those typical and specific conditions of approval. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate that. So I'd like to ask any of Commissioners if they have any questions for this item? I see.
I'll save mine for after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any of my Commissioners online? Commissioner Gilbert, have any questions at this time? Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
No.
Commissioner Manning?
Thank you, I have no questions.
Okay, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. This is for Item 8A.
Specifically a public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Garabedian. The agenda I have, doesn't have letter As under this. So my question is, will the other two items, independents and the annexation, are those going to come up for separate?
Yes.
Public comment?
Yes, sir.
I have no comment on this first part. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Garabedian. Mr. Garabedian, they will.
Our, our city attorney is confirming that there will be three independent public hearings.
Thank you.
Okay, any other members of the public in the room that would like to speak to this item? Do we have anybody online, Angela, that would like to speak? Any raised hands from the public?
I do not see any.
Okay, then I will close public hearing, and I will ask my Commissioners, fellow Commissioners, if they have any questions. I think you had one item.
I do have one. It's a fairly minor question, but I, looking at the, at the language in the resolution itself, I see some language that I've never seen, or at least I've never noticed before, and different than other resolutions. It says specifically, "As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that," blah, blah, blah. It seems odd for us to resolve that the staff will recommend for us to resolve. I think it should just read, "The Planning Commission finds that." And, and that's in Items, that's in Section Two, Item Two, and Item Three.
And I want to make sure we have the same resolution.
It's the, um, conditional use permit. Sorry, I should have been more specific.
Conditional use permit, Item Two.
Section Two, Item Two, and Three. Last sentence of each one. Yes, that looks like it's a cut and paste error from the staff. It's kind of what I guessed. We would recommend upon, if, upon a favorable motion, to modify Section Two, subsection Two and Three to clarify the last sentence as "The Planning Commission finds," and continuing with that, it is, "The use is appropriate for the district for subsection Two, and that it is not detrimental to health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the city for subsection Three."
Correct. So with that correction, subparagraph two, we would revise it to say, "As such, delete 'Staff recommends that thee.'" It would be, "As such, Planning Commission finds that the use would be appropriate in the district." Subparagraph three, "As such, delete 'Staff recommends that thee.'" It would be, "As such, Planning Commission finds that Recreation Center is not detrimental to the health, safety, peace." The rest of the sentence.
And if there are no further comments, I would move that we approve this with that particular change.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please? This is for Resolution 2021, a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the 12 Bridges Village Four Community Building. We have a motion and a second.
And, and for clarity, it's 2021 dash?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Did I say that wrong?
Twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
As amended.
As amended, correct. Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Manning?
No.
And Chair McKinney?
Yes. Okay, we are now to the second resolution, and this is Resolution 2021-21, Resolution approving the Specific Development Plan Development Permit, Design Review, and Recommendations of the Designer Review Board for the 12 Bridges Village Four Community Building. I have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Manning?
No.
And Chair McKinney?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. We are now to Item 8B. This is a public hearing to consider an addendum to the Independence at Lincoln 2017 Environmental Impact Report, an amendment to the Independence at Lincoln General Plan, General Development Plan, and a tentative subdivision map revising Units Two and Five, adding Unit Six, increasing the number of residential lots from 575 to 591 within the Independence at Lincoln Project. And I believe we have a presentation from Rob.
Yes, thanks, Chair McKinney. You pretty much summed it all up. It's, it's a pretty simple project, but there's a lot that's kind of goes behind it. The requested action this evening that the, the Planning Commission is meant to look at is a public hearing request to review a number of entitlements. The first one is the Addendum to the Independence at Lincoln 2017 Environmental Impact Report. The second one is a recommendation to the City Council to approve the amendments to the Independence at Lincoln General Development Plan, and a recommendation that the City Council approve an amendment to the Independence at Lincoln tentative, vesting tentative subdivision map revising Units Two and Five and adding Unit Six, increasing the number of residential units from 575 to 591. The, uh, the project location, the Independence at Lincoln Project is comprised of approximately 194 acres and is generally located adjacent to the Glenmore subdivision, which is a single-family residential neighborhood to the north and the east. A property that is actually used for the, the school's bus and maintenance operation, which is North and Nicholas Road, and commercial development and undevelopment land to the, to the further north, and the Santa Clara Memorial Park Cemetery and single-family residential neighborhoods further south, and undeveloped land to the west. In 2017, the City Council approved the Independence at Lincoln Project, which is a master-planned community that includes low and medium-density residential land uses, open space and public facilities to serve the development. And more specifically, the project included the construction of 575 residential lots. Each neighborhood would have a range of homes and sizes, which are to be determined by the future home builders and buyer demand. Four of the five neighborhoods are adjacent to and surround a Central Park, and there is a 35-acre remainder parcel at the southeastern corner of the project site. Currently, portions of this are actually under construction and homes are being built. Currently, Lewis Land Development is requesting to modify a portion of the approved lots within the central portion of the site as shown in the darker purple, the yellow, and the bluish areas around what's known as Park B. The applicant is requesting to reconfigure parcels within Units Two and Unit Five, resulting in the creation of a new Unit Six. And a total of 16 additional parcels would be created by this amendment. All other project amenities would remain unchanged. Along with the revision to the mapping, the applicant is requesting minimal amendments to the Independence at Lincoln General Development Plan and include new 40-foot-wide by 90-foot-deep parcel sizes and development standards for this area, and updates to the acreage for the land uses, minor updates to language for each of the, each of the units, and the updated mapping within the General Development Plan. The city has determined that an addendum to the Independence at Lincoln 2017 Environmental Impact Report is the appropriate level of documentation to satisfy the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. The addendum was prepared in order to evaluate whether new information was received regarding the, the new project, and if there would be a result in any new or substantially more adverse significant effects or require any new mitigation not identified in the previous Independence at Lincoln 2017 Environmental Impact Report. The city hired Ascent Environmental to prepare the addendum, and the two representatives, Alta Cunningham and Amanda Oleks Zulin, are on the call in case there are any questions, follow-up questions after I complete my presentation. The analysis of the project determined that the current project does not require any major revisions to the analysis previously adopted in the 2017 Environmental Impact Report, nor are there any substantial, nor are there substantial changes that would occur with respect to the circumstances under which the project would be undertaken. Based on the analysis provided in the addendum, there is no substantial evidence that the modified project would have a significant effect on the environment beyond the impacts that were previously evaluated in the 2017 EIR prepared for the Independence at Lincoln Project. Therefore, the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, findings concerning alternatives, and statement of overriding consideration adopted as part of the 2017 EIR by the City Council are still applicable to the project. Supported by the analysis provided in the staff report, staff concluded that the amendment to the Independence at Lincoln to the Independence at Lincoln project is consistent with the goals, policies, intent and intent of the city's general plan, the Lincoln Municipal Code and the Independence at Lincoln General Development Plan. Staff reviewed the internal design and lots, roadways, parks and open space, and has determined that the project is well-designed and will provide a positive addition to the housing options in the city of Lincoln. I am happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Rob. I very much appreciate the report. So at this time, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions. Commissioner Cross?
No, no questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lyons?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Johnson?
Not at this time.
I'm mixing it up a little.
Throwing me off.
Commissioner Gilbert?
No.
Commissioner Manning?
We have some questions. Rob, thanks for the presentation. Can you go back and show me in your presentation where, like, the difference of those, the first plan and the second plan, where this area six is?
Sure, definitely. So this is the existing approved layout, as it was approved in 2017. So the yellow area on the screen, right, kind of in, somewhat toward the middle, but toward the western portion of the project site, that is currently unit two, and the blue area just below the yellow is unit five. So what they're doing is they're taking and rearranging some of these lots within these two areas, still staying within the medium density residential for this area, and amending, amending the yellow and the blue and, and adding that, that purply color in there. And this, this map, which is in your packet, has a little bit more detail with regard to lot sizes and, and where those, the, you can see actually the kind of dotted line gives also the delineation between units.
And then there was another graph you showed that I think it had some, some, some data based on before and after. So is the red column what they're proposing?
That's correct. Yeah, they're, they're proposing to add this new lot size and, and lot requirements.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Gilbert, I have asked already, do you have any questions at this time?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn it to the public, open it up for a public hearing for item eight B. And I'll ask, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak to item eight B?
Yes, Mike Arbedian. You know, plans are pretty important when they're adopted, and we, we hope that they will last. So, and I heard a very detailed explanation about CEQA, I felt, and what's being done, but I didn't hear any explanation of why the changes are being made. I, I think that would be important to know, given that plans, you know, you like to rely on them. So that's, that's my inquiry, is why the change, the various changes have been made and things moved around and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Chair McKenney. Phil Rodriguez with the Lewis Group of Companies, we're the proponent for this application, and I can easily answer that question. The change is really to respond to the marketplace, creating a little bit more of a slightly diverse product type, adjusting to square footages to accommodate the marketplace price points. It's really an enhancement to what we've done originally. You know, the park, the park layouts, the schematics, the acreage, none of that changed. It's just taking, you know, certain lot sizes and shrinking the number of them, and then adding in the third product type. That's, that's really the, hopefully that answers the question. And I'm, I'm available for any other questions if you have.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak to item eight B? Seeing that Angela, is there anybody online with a hand raised? None, okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing for this item. We have three resolutions to consider. The first, well, I'd like, before we do that, I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any additional questions or comments. So I'm going to start with our virtual commissioners. Commissioner Gilbert?
No, I have none.
Commissioner Manning?
Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, I have none.
Thank you. And in the room with me, Commissioner Lyons?
I have, I have a comment. I just would like to remind the public and my colleagues of the role of the planning commission in these kinds of things. There are two general roles of, of a commission like the planning commission. That is, there is a role for policy setting, which is in creating general plans, which was done back in 2008. And, but most of the time, our role is specifically adjudicating, did the applicant meet the requirements? In this case, the, this whole process started roughly 17 years ago. This is just one more little thing of, did they meet the requirements for what they're applying for? And, and so this is not a matter of, is this good for the city, is it not good for the city? That decision was made by the city council a long time ago. Our decision is supposed to be legally required to be, to the items that we are voting on, which are, did they meet the requirements or not? And I would, I would like to suggest, and this is only a suggestion, that if you don't like it and are intending to vote against it, I would, I would like personally to hear your legal justification for why you would vote against it. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
No comments.
And Commissioner Cross?
Only that I'd like to support what Commissioner Lyons was saying. Basically, in this kind of, of item, we're just here to determine whether or not they're coloring within the lines, you know, if you would. And, and I think the, the presentation was, to me, was complete and inclusive and, and did what it needed to do.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have any questions on this item. So with that, we will look at our first resolution. This is Resolution 2021 dash 22, a resolution approving an addendum to the Independence at Lincoln 2017 Environmental Impact Report.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second. May I have roll call?
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Manning?
No.
And Chair McKenney?
Yes. We are now to our second resolution. This is Resolution 2021 dash 23, a resolution of the planning commission recommending approval of an amendment to the Independence at Lincoln General Development Plan.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Manning?
No.
Chair McKenney?
Yes. And we are to our third resolution. This is Resolution 2021 dash 24, a resolution of the city of Lincoln recommending approval of the small lot vesting tentative subdivision map for Independence at Lincoln project on various assessors' parcel numbers.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have roll call?
Commissioner Cross?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Manning?
No.
And Chair McKenney?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We are now to our third item on our public hearing agenda, and this is the Village Five Final Partially Recirculated Environmental Impact Report, Village Seven Addendum to the Final EIR, Village Seven Pre-Zone Amendment to the Village Seven General Development Plan, Annexation Authorization for Approximately 4,016 Acres Within the Village Five Specific Plan, and Annexation Authorization for the Remaining Unincorporated Portion of the Village Seven Specific Plan. And Mr. Prosser?
Good evening, Chair McKenney and members of the planning commission. The item before you tonight, of course, is a request for annexation authorization for Village Five and Remnant Village Seven and the associated environmental documents that would allow the city to submit an application to Plaster County Local Agency Formation Commission or LAFCO for implement or beginning the process to evaluate these sites for future annexation into the city of Lincoln. So this presentation will be, be in five parts. The first will be relatively short, and I'll be presenting the annexation areas. I will then be turning the presentation over to our environmental consultant, ESA, to go over the partially recirculated final EIR for Village Five and the addendum associated with Village Seven, and then return to conclude with staff's recommendations to the planning commission. So the project area, of course, is the Village Five proper and Village Seven remnant area. We did provide in purple the Sud B Northeast Quadrant for reference, so you can see the location of, of this area for future annexation. The project you just recently heard is just east of the Sud B Purple area, which was the Independence Old Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is current edge of city limits. The Sud B EQ project area is, was approved by council for a specific plan, general development plan, and is currently, has an application into LAFCO for annexation. We are finalizing the tax sharing agreement with the county currently and believe we'll be in front of the commission for hearing within the next two to three months. But that, just for reference on, on where the future city limits will be with, hopefully by the end of calendar year 2021. So the Village Five area, again, just over 47,000 acres, 4,700 acres of land, west portion of the city. It was a combination of Village Five and the remnant, the remaining portions of Special Use District B. In 2014, the Airport Land Use Commission updated the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which relaxed some of the overflight restrictions to, which already have Special Use District B, which allowed that to be incorporated into a village plan, which a village plan is predominantly created to allow for the growth of residential and commercial uses, with the Special Use District usually allocated to those non-residential industrial uses that are more appropriate in, within flight zones, overflight zones, airport constrained areas and other industrial-style developments. So I'm going to start with the Village Seven requested entitlements, which is the pre-zone annexation authorization and general development plan, development amendment. When Village Seven Specific Plan and General Development Plan were approved by the city in 2010, this area was incorporated into the specific plan, but it was not incorporated into the general development plan or pre-zoned prior to annex, to the Village Seven annexation. So these three areas, which are approximately 180-plus acres, identify as a Schreiber area, they can wrench to, and a remainder area, were not pre-zoned and were not annexed in 2014. The remaining area, which was under, which was and is under the control of Lewis Land Development, was annexed in full, and is currently zoned for future development in the city of Lincoln. So the area that we are looking to pre-zone today includes open space, low density, medium density and recreational park areas in all three zoning, in all three zoning areas, consistent with the Village Seven Specific Plan. In addition to the pre-zone, the city of Lincoln has been in discussions with the area residents in the Village Seven Remnant Area and for approximately 24 months. One of the major concerns of the Village Seven proponents or property owners in that area is the ability or inability to continue their agricultural uses upon annexation into, into the city. So the city had identified that as a concern, our environmental consultants identified that as a concern, and as a result, the city has proposed a general development plan amendment consistent with what we provided to the Village Five area of an agricultural overlay to allow for the continued end of existing agricultural uses and the establishment of new agricultural uses in the area with the exact same standards that were approved for Village Five. Again, we wanted to ensure the continued operation of existing agricultural uses while we facilitate logical development within our growth areas. So for Village Seven, that is a request for, for planning commission to recommend that we create or adopt an ordinance to create the agricultural overlay as part of the Village Seven General Development Plan and provide consistency between this remnant area of Village Seven, actually all of Village Seven, and what we have approved for in Village Five. So as far as the Village Five requested entitlements, oh, and I will go back one slide. When Village Seven was adopted by city council upon recommendation by the planning commission, we did not authorize annexation at that time. Authorization of annexation by city council is the first step of the annexation process. So once we have authorization, then an application is presented to LAFCO for their analysis, utilizing our documentation and an environmental review to make a determination if it's consistent with their policies. With Village Five requested entitlements, we, the Village Five Specific Plan and General Development Plan and Pre-Zone were approved by city council, beginning in December of 2017, finalized in January of 2018, for just over 4,700 acres of land identified on, on the map. The area that is in color is the area that we're asking for authorization for annexation. There is an area in the northwest corner of the project site between Special Use District B Northeast Quadrant and the area for Village Five annexation that is being left off the annexation request. It would remain an unincorporated area. That area is pre-zoned as rural residential, and it is also under a very restrictive overflight requirements for our Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan due to its overflight safety concerns just south of the southern portion of our runway.
Is that the upper right-hand corner?
Upper right-hand corner. When, traditionally, these unincorporated areas are discouraged for, when, when moving forward with annexations of new growth areas, with, as I stated in the staff report, one important exception, and that exception is when we have identified an area that through written correspondence, surveys or other types of documentation shows that inclusion of those properties in with the annexation area would result in a, would result in a non-favorable outcome for an annexation. So you are allowed to, to phrase that in such a manner that provides for the logical annexation of areas that are, that would be, that would successfully complete an annexation process in public hearing without including those that would under protest cause for the annexation to fail. Those properties, again, are, have limited development opportunities, but notwithstanding that, they can, and at any time in the future, voluntarily annex into the city at their discretion or at their desire. Traditionally, that occurs when the, when the background infrastructure is in and they're in need of some type of utility service that is not being provided by the unincorporated areas, or that, or their, their opinion on development changes and they're looking to sell and, and develop that property. So those areas are on well and septic. Once the main city's water is going right in front of their properties and sewer system, if those systems fail, then it's a great opportunity for them to continue doing their residential and agricultural uses while utilizing city facilities. So again, this area, I wanted to show you that it's Area B1, which is the second most restrictive area of our Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Area A is our most restrictive, and it covers the lowest area of approach to our, to the runway and the runway itself, where no development can occur. B1 allows for development, but very limited and traditionally non-residential use. Again, this is the Village Five land use. There is no change to the required land uses or approved land uses by, that were adopted by city council. We are looking to allow an application for about 4,019 acres of Village Five, with just over 700 acres for future annexation, and that is the northwest. And that is the northwest corner with a village rural residential and a small component of business and professional at the southwest corner of Nelson and Nicholas. So at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jonathan with ESA, and he will describe the activities to date from the city for the Village Five partially recirculated EIR due to litigation. And then second part of the presentation will be the discussion on the addendum for Village Seven.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So I am ESA's project manager for the Village Five specific plan, partially recirculated EIR. I'm joined by my colleague, Brian Boxer, who is the ESA project director for this effort. The presentation topics for my piece will be the SEQA process, the project background, draft partially recirculated EIR, comments on the draft partially recirculated EIR, finally, final partially recirculated EIR, and next steps. Next slide, please. So to begin with, the purpose of SEQA is to disclose to the public the significant environmental effects of a proposed discretionary project, prevent or minimize damage to the environment through development of project alternatives, mitigation measures, and mitigation monitoring, to disclose to the public agency decision-making process utilized to approve discretionary projects, enhance public participation in the environmental review process, and improve inter-agency coordination through early consultation. Next slide, please. This graphic summarizes the standard EIR process. As shown, the initial scoping process and draft EIR stages have been completed. This project is in the final EIR stage and is undergoing the certification process, with the response to comments on the draft partially recirculated EIR being completed. Next slide. The proposed project is located in unincorporated Placer County, within the city's sphere of influence. The city's adopted general plan identifies this area as a village designated for further development as part of the specific plan. Next slide. The specific plan proposes a mix of master plan residential, retail, and office uses, and public semi-public facilities, including high school and junior high school, and three elementary schools, parks, and open space land uses. The implementation of the specific plan would require annexation to the city of four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five acres in unincorporated area of western Placerville County, which is situated along the southwest boundary of the City of Lincoln. The specific plan would include the development of approximately two-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety gross acres of residential uses, four-hundred-and-forty-three acres of commercial uses, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-eight acres of parks and open space, and one-hundred-and-eighteen acres of public uses. Next slide, please. This image shows the proposed land uses, approximate transportation, circulation network, and open space that would occur under the Village Five specific plan. To provide the background on the SEQA timeline, the notice of preparation was released by the city on May 22 of 2014. The city received twenty-nine NOP comment letters regarding the scope of the environmental analysis for the EIR. The draft EIR was circulated for public review and comment for a period of forty-five days that ended on October 11 of 2016. The city received twenty-five comment letters during the comment period on the draft EIR for the proposed project. The city certified the final EIR for the Village Five specific plan and approved the specific plan on December 5 of 2017, and on January 12 of 2018, following the city council certification of the 2017 EIR. An approval of the specific plan, Shiber Ranch properties, filed a petition for writ of mandate in the Superior Court of California in the County of Placer alleging violations of the California Environmental Quality Act. Final judgment was filed on June 25 of 2020. The court issued a preemptory writ of mandate on April 13, upholding two of the petitioner's arguments related to mitigation of potentially significant impacts to biological resources and the level of analysis conducted for potential project impacts related to transit. The final judgment was filed on June 25 of 2020. Next slide, please. For impacts to agricultural resources and biological resources, the court ruled that the EIR improperly deferred mitigation for agricultural impacts and impacts to biological resources in relying on the draft Placer County Conservation Program, or PCCP. The judgment affirmed the finding from the initial ruling that the alternative mitigation measures required in the event that the PCCP is not adopted were determined to be adequate. For impacts related to transit, the court ruled that the EIR fails to adequately analyze impacts to transit. The ruling also identified the severability of its findings, saying the certification of the EIR and adoption of findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations as they relate specifically to reliance on the PCCP as mitigation and impacts transit are severable from the remaining project approvals. Therefore, other parts of the EIR and approvals that are not relevant or covered by the court findings remain valid, and no further action is required pursuant to the court findings. Thus, the court directed the city to make appropriate directions or corrections to the EIR, but stated that all other project approvals were based on portions of the EIR that are not affected by the court's decision, and no remedial action is required unless compliance with the writ changes or affects the other project approvals. Next slide, please. The ruling directed the city to take corrective actions that brings agricultural and biological resource mitigation measures into compliance with SEQA and prepares an analysis that adequately discusses transit. The city response is to revise and recirculate relevant sections of the Village Five specific plan EIR in the form of a partially recirculated EIR. Next slide, please. The draft partially recirculated EIR was begun with the following actions. The city initiated the corrective action identified by the court by passing Resolution 2020-122, which decertified portions of the Village Five specific plan EIR and portions of the city's findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, all as they relate to, one, reliance on the PCCP as mitigation for agricultural resource impacts and biological resource impacts, and, two, impacts to transit. The city then prepared the draft partially recirculated EIR, or DPR EIR, which revised and recirculated the following sections of the 2017 EIR: Section 3.2 Agriculture and Forestry Resources, Section 3.4 Biological Resources, and Section 3.15 Transportation and Circulation. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you reverse by one slide? Thank you. The draft partially recirculated EIR was circulated for a forty-five-day public comment period from May 7 of 2021 through June 21. A notice of completion, OPR summary form, and digital copy of the DPR EIR were filed with the State Clearing House on May 7 of 2021 and have since been accessible on the SEQUA net website. An NOA for the DPR EIR was published in the Lincoln Messenger and sent to appropriate public agencies, and the draft was also published in the city's website. Physical copies were made available for in-person review at the City of Lincoln Community Development Department and the Lincoln Public Library, and public comments were also invited and accepted during a City of Lincoln Planning Commission meeting on May 19 of this year. Five comment letters were received and comments during the Planning Commission meeting on May 19 of this year. The key environmental issues raised were in regards to agricultural production, biological resources, the Placer County Conservation Plan, transit, transportation and circulation, and water supply. No new significant impacts or substantial increases in severity of impacts were identified in comments provided. Next slide, please. Okay, so the city has, I'm sorry, next slide, please.
Now, you're at the final partial, yep.
I'm sorry, I am the final partial years. Okay, sorry. The city has prepared a final partially recirculated EIR, which responds to comments received on the DPR EIR. The final partially recirculated EIR includes the following components: Chapter 1, introduction to the final; Chapter 2, revisions to the draft partially recirculated EIR made in response to public comments; Chapter 3, responses to all comments received on the draft partially recirculated EIR; and Chapter 4, the updated mitigation monitoring plan for the Village Five project. Chapter 2 of the FPR EIR includes minor revisions to the draft partially recirculated EIR in the following sections. In Section 3.2 Agriculture and Forestry Resources, revisions were made to clarify the relevance of the PCCP as partial mitigation for impacts to important farmland and agricultural operations. In Section 3.4 Biological Resources, revisions were made to impact avoidance and minimization mitigation language to provide specific mitigation for American badger and bird species that are not covered under the PCCP. Next slide, please. There you are. Chapter 3, Comments and Responses, provides responses to each of the comments received in the DPR EIR. Responses to comments relevant to the DPR EIR included written responses to the comments and revisions to the DPR EIR as identified in Chapter 2 of the final partially recirculated EIR. The DPR EIR comments that were not specifically relevant to the draft partially recirculated EIR were also responded to with clarifying information where necessary. Comments on the DPR EIR did not identify a new significant impact, substantial increase in the severity of impacts, or considerably different feasible alternative or inadequacy of the DPR EIR that would require recirculation of the DPR EIR pursuant to Section 15088.5 of the SEQUA guidelines. Chapter 4 of the final partially recirculated EIR includes an updated mitigation monitoring plan, or MMP, which incorporates changes to the mitigation measures from the DPR EIR and FPR EIR into the MMP for the Village Five specific plan EIR from 2017. The primary updates to the MMP are related to implementation of the adopted PCCP. The remaining steps in the SEQA process include the following. The city has posted the FPR EIR for publication and announced the date of the Planning Commission hearing for recommendation of approval for the PR EIR. The Planning Commission is holding this hearing to consider a recommendation of approval of the FPR EIR, and the city will post the FPR EIR for publication and announce the date of a city council decision hearing on certification of the FPR EIR. The council will also consider revised findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations specific to the recirculated materials, and the city council will hold a decision hearing to consider certification of partially recirculated EIR and adoption of findings and statement of overriding considerations. Next slide, please. That concludes this part of my presentation. My colleague, Brian Boxer, and I are available to answer questions related to the partially recirculated EIR.
Thank you, Jonathan. And so, yeah, so the next part two of the ESA presentation will be a discussion on the addendum to the Village Seven specific plan EIR.
Apologies for the brief delay. So to provide relevant background for the Village Seven addendum, the city intends to facilitate the annexation of remaining unincorporated parcels in the Village Seven specific plan area through the following actions: Amendment to the general development plan to apply an agricultural overlay zoning district to the Village Seven specific plan pre-zoning, and request to LAFCO for annexation of remaining Village Seven specific plan area, and approval of an addendum to the Village Seven specific plan EIR to enable LAFCO approval of the request for annexation. The relevant LAFCO context for the addendum to the EIR is as follows. Placer County LAFCO needs to consider the adequacy of the Village Seven specific plan EIR in its decision. Major development projects in the region have advanced since completion of the EIR, as will be shown on the next slide, and LAFCO must consider approval of the city's annexation request with consideration of cumulative development. The city has prepared an addendum to the Village Seven specific plan EIR which considers current and anticipated future cumulative development in combination with the Village Seven specific plan. This slide shows key approved major development projects that have evolved since completion of the Village Seven specific plan EIR, and these include the Village Five specific plan, the Sunset Area Plan, and Placer Ranch specific plan, and Placer Vineyards projects, among other small but also meaningful projects. Next slide. The next two slides provide the SEQA context for the analysis in the addendum. Those details are summarized here, but I will move past these slides. Overall, it is important to note that none of the criteria for preparation of a subsequent EIR or supplemental EIR are triggered. Next slide, please. And one more slide, please. So to get to the key issues from the EIR, or from the addendum, agricultural resources and land use mitigation. Application of the agricultural overlay zone would allow for the continuation of Williams-Senat contracts through the zoning change that would occur as part of the annexation process. Therefore, mitigation measure 4.1-6B, which prevents the rezoning of a land under Williams-Senat contract, is no longer required and has been removed from the MMP. Participation in the PCCP would provide additional mitigation for impacts to important farmland and agricultural operations that was not available when the EIR was completed. The, for the biological resources mitigation, the in-kind conservation or compensation for impacts to habitat required in existing biological resources mitigation measure 4.8-10 of the Village Seven specific plan EIR would be satisfied through project participation in the PCCP and compliance with the requirements of the program as implemented in mitigation measure biological resources 1 included in the addendum. However, this does not affect existing processes for implementing compensatory mitigation that are currently underway for the Lewis property. In, so for the determination for the addendum, having considered the analysis set forth in the addendum, the City of Lincoln has concluded that the analysis conducted and the conclusions reached in the Village Seven specific plan EIR remain relevant and valid. There are no, there is no evidence in the record that there would be new or substantially more severe impacts than were disclosed in the EIR. A subsequent or supplemental EIR is not required, and the Village Seven project would implement all required mitigation measures.
Thank you, Jonathan. So to conclude, we want, staff wants to respectfully recommend the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing, consider the information contained in staff report, testimony of the public, and the presentation, and take following actions: Adopt a resolution recommending council certify the Village Five partially recirculated environmental impact report. Again, this is specific to the sections of biological, agricultural, and transportation. The remaining sections of the original EIR are in effect and are approved and not under consideration, nor is the Village Five specific plan, Village Five general development plan, the Village Five DA, and any other associated entitlements. This is specific to the judge's order and compliance with the current judge's order to bring portions of the documents into compliance with SEQA in order for LAFCO to utilize the documents for their analysis of the annexation request. Second, approve a resolution recommending also approve addendum to the Village Seven final environmental impact report. And the addendum was necessary to evaluate the Village Seven specific plan based on recent and anticipated projects within that area. The Village Seven plan was originally approved in 2010. The environmental, more than likely, was three to four years before as the beginning of the analysis, and we, staff was notified by concerned citizens that they believed that the original Village Seven EIR was not ripe and needed to be evaluated to ensure that we evaluated environmental impacts for projects that were recently adopted, constructed, or proposed, anticipated. So staff took that into consideration and authorized the commencement of the addendum to the EIR. Adopt a resolution recommending city council adopt an ordinance for the Village Seven pre-zone. The pre-zone of the standard zoning is consistent with the Village Seven specific plan as approved by the city council, as recommended by approval by the Planning Commission, and with a inclusion of the agricultural overlay as the newest addition to the pre-zone to ensure the continued operation of agricultural uses in the remnant areas, and again, to operation of agricultural uses in the remnant areas, and again, to allow and as a benefit to maintain and continue Williams-Senat contracts for those agricultural lands that would have been triggered if the agricultural overlay is not implemented in the Village 7 area. Adopt a resolution recommending council adopt an ordinance amending the Village 7 general development plan to establish the agricultural overlay zone to, again, continue to allow for those Village 7 property owners in the remnant area actually throughout the specific plan area for Village 7 to continue agricultural operations as they see fit and at whatever time they feel is appropriate, either develop or change their agricultural operations and would be in compliance with city regulations. Adopt a resolution recommending city council authorize the initiation of annexation for approximately 4,000-plus acres in the Village 5 specific plan area as identified in the exhibits of the draft resolution and as recommended by staff in compliance with the goals and policies of the City of Lincoln general plan for logical growth within our sphere of influence. And lastly, adopt a resolution recommending that the city council authorize initiation of annexation for the unincorporated portions of the Village 7 specific plan, those identified in the exhibit of the draft resolution, the three areas, the Chiber, the Atkin II, and the remainder, totaling just over 180 acres of land to be developed at some point in the future of residential, open space, medium-density residential, and parkland. And I am available for any questions. The original project proponent for the Village 5 specific plan is present and happy to answer any questions and also would like to speak at the convenience of the commission.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all the presentation provided from you, Steve, and from your consultant, ESA. So with that, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners if they have questions, and I will start in the room with Commissioner Cross.
No, I'm fine. I have no questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions real quick, thanks for Steve. So I appreciate, I know it's been a few years since we had votes and talked about it, and there were quite a few issues back then. You know, the ag overlay was one of the big ones. From what I understand, there's been a lot of improvements made from what you presented. So I just want to clarify, so there, I guess with the, I don't know, the new updated version or some of the changes that were made, is they could go into new operations or change, you know, what they're currently doing at any point, you know, in the future, as they wish.
That is correct. If there is an existing agricultural use there prior to annexation, post-annexation, they can continue operations. They can continue operations, they can expand operations, and change the type of agricultural uses they're wanting on their land with no, in full compliance with the city's regulations. If a land that has not currently been used as agricultural is annexed, and they want to propose new agricultural uses, that is permitted by right, with the exception that if it is around an area that's already developed by a non-agricultural use, there are specific buffers and easements that will need to be in place to do that new agricultural use. If the land around them is undeveloped, then those regulations are not in place.
So those are the setbacks you're talking about?
Yes.
Do you mind just elaborating just a tiny bit? So how that works is, if I understood right, just in conversation with the applicant, so the first in right, I guess, has, I guess, precedence over that?
The established use, whether it's agricultural or non-agricultural, is the use that has the rights to be there. If you have an agricultural use and the surrounding property would like to develop residential or commercial, then they are subject to the development standards for new uses that are currently in the Village 5 plan and are, we are proposing for the Village 7 plan, exactly the same, so that the acreage, the width, the coverage, and the setbacks for accessory buildings, animal keeping, and other types of agricultural uses would be there, or you would have to set the residential away from the current existing agricultural to minimize that conflict.
Okay.
In addition to the standard conditions of approval for a new residential development where we would provide disclosures for right to farm against those existing, because of the proximity of the existing agricultural.
Okay.
But that's through the entitlement process and not through this process.
Okay, thanks. And then just one more question kind of related to this part. So there's no time cap, like in 100 years that expires, or, so I guess generation after generation could continue farming or doing what they want in the ag area until they decide to?
One of the concerns from the property owners in that surrounding area, and it is one that it provides a small portion of uncertainty. This is an ordinance, and an ordinance can be changed by city council. So it is not in perpetuity and doesn't run with the land. We hope it would, but we cannot bind the hands of future councils for creating the laws necessary to protect the public life, safety, and general welfare. We as staff and our previous city manager, in concurrence with our current city attorney, have developed a solution, and it's not part of this application, not part of this process, but it is a development agreement that property owners could enter into that would give them a level of certainty that they would grant that right for as long as that development agreement is in place. It would be a property owner to property owner agreement with the city. I jokingly call it the anti-development agreement. It gives them the right to continue to do agricultural uses for as long as they see fit, and both parties would have to agree to that change. So if at some point they want to develop, we happily remove that restriction. But that is something that the city has worked on for a long period of time, have available, and would still support to any property owner that would be interested.
And Mr. Prosser, this is Christine. Attending virtually, I will just piggyback on your comment that we have drafted what we have called the non-development development agreement, because it is a development agreement which would then be, it basically encompasses this ag overlay into a development agreement that can then be recorded against the property which now runs with the land, which is different than what the ag overlay is. And so it would be something that the city would enter into, which would then run with the land and provide the property owners that wish to enter into that agreement even a greater level of certainty with respect to their ability to continue their ag operations. And so we have made that available to many of the property owners that are impacted by the annexation. We have yet to have one of them take us up on the offer, but it is certainly out there, and we continue to be willing to extend that offer and enter into those discussions.
And I will clarify, we have been in conversation with those that have concerns about their continuation of agricultural lands and the potential annexations to the city. Those that we have not heard from or neutral support, that would still be available for them, but we reached out to those who contacted us that had concerns about that continuing as agricultural and had those conversations, but we are open to have those conversations with any property owner.
Okay, perfect. I think one more question for me at this point. There were concerns about being able to use firearms for different purposes in agriculture areas, you know, once it's annexed, and I hear, was there a solution to that?
Yeah, our city attorney took forward an ordinance about 2018, I believe, to then codify that citywide. It's not specific to Village 5 or Village 7.
Okay.
But provided the opportunity for use of firearms for agricultural purposes.
And those?
And some recreational purposes.
Okay. And what?
So just to be clear, the ordinance that was passed included, we have, out in the Village 5 area, there are existing ranges, so those uses would be allowed to exist. There are some limitations. For example, when development started to encroach upon it, it gives the police chief the opportunity every two years to go out and check out and make sure that it's not an incompatible use. I understand there's also some duck hunting and those type of uses out there, and so it would allow those types of uses to continue. And then it would also allow for properties that are, you know, ranging cattle and that type of thing, when they need to put down animals or need to shoot coyotes or those type of predatory animals, they are still continued to use firearms in those circumstances. So that ordinance was passed and codified a couple of years ago. It is one of the more unique firearm ordinances in the state of California, because typically firearm ordinances provide that there is no discharge of a firearm in the city limits, period. And so this was a very creative solution that we were able to come to a good conclusion with. I think it solved all of the members in Village 5 and Village 7's concerns, and it went through relatively seamlessly. So it was something that I think we as a city, when it comes to addressing the concerns of Village 5 and 7 residents, should be proud of.
Yeah, thank you. Those are the only questions I have at the moment. Just want to say, you know, thanks to the city and the applicant for considering, you know, taking into consideration all the feedback and input that you've been given.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lyons?
I just want to thank Commissioner Johnson for asking some very good questions, many of them overlap with mine, and I'll make it faster, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate this discussion about firearms. I didn't recall that happening. I'm going to have to look into that. I just want to, because of some of the answers I got, I just, a lot of this is just going to be confirming what I think I heard, okay? So tell me if I heard incorrectly. So this ag overlay applies to both Village 5 and Village 7, is that correct?
Village 5 is already pre-zoned with an ag overlay attached, so upon annexation, that would be implemented without any further?
It's not a change, but I mean, but the same rules, but they're not different.
They're not, they're exactly the same, but we do have to adopt the same language in the Village 7 general development plan, so that Village 7 can benefit from it.
Assume they're adopted, they're both going to be the same.
Exactly.
I saw language that said it can be retained for the agricultural use if it was that at the time of annexation. And one of the nuances that made me wonder is how precise that has to be. So for example, I know that some farmers follow a practice of letting the ground lie fallow once every few years. If it happens to be a year that is lying fallow, does that mean it's considered lying fallow and they can't farm it again unless it's considered new after that?
That's part of the farming process, so that is the appropriate utilization of the land.
And I saw a list of different categories, livestock and crops and so forth. Can you switch from one category to another, so we can grow hay one year, graze cattle another year? That's not a problem?
That is not a problem. Again, that is, existing prior to annexation can make that change with very little difficulty. New properties that never had an agricultural use, dependent on what has developed around them, will trigger different requirements, but both are able to do that.
So when I was talking with the representatives from Richland, they referred to this ag overlay being very similar, if not identical, to what's happening in the Riverside-Chino vicinity. And I would like to hear from them, if it pleases the chair, to explain how that's working there and how it's being received there.
Yes, if you could make me approach, thank you.
Evening Chair Kinney, Kinney, I'm sorry. Members of the planning commission, Craig Christina with Richland Communities. I appreciate the comment or the question. We've had experience now going on 20 years in two ag reserves in the city of Chino, the city of Ontario, both in California. Former ag reserves, next, very similar and are analogous to this. Older cities, you know, started incorporation in the 1800s, now building out. This ag reserve got removed, annexed into the city, but both of those cities chose, and also part of Riverside County as well in East of L. But the two San Bernardino cities were proactive in having an ag overlay, or right to farm ordinance, or basically many of the same similar characteristics that we have in Lincoln. We drew from those examples in crafting the ag overlay. We don't find it that often, but we happen to do a bit of business in ag overlays. So in the 20 years, so that happened in 1999 was when those happened in Southern California. We're now 2021, and in California, it takes a long time to build out, gosh, 45,000 homes in Ontario, and there's about 20,000 homes, I believe, in Chino. Still a lot of farming going on. And we have this, you know, happening throughout the ag area where we have, you know, really the farmers are first in right if they have farming going on. And so we, as a landowner developer who build next door, have a choice to make in whether we build up to the buffer or choose not to develop until the land next to us is not being farmed anymore. But yeah, we see the setbacks in place. We see farmers also working with developers too and working out amicable solutions to setbacks on either side of the fence, but it does give that first right to who's in place originally. And so, I mean, we're seeing good, smart growth, very well master-planned communities develop over these many years, creating great places, but also allowing the farmers to choose when, if, and if they want to sell or develop their properties.
May I follow up with a question?
You sure?
Have you seen any cases where there has been talk in the city council of rescinding that ag overlay ordinance?
No, it's very ingrained with the community culture in those two cities. You know, 20 years may seem like a long time, but it really isn't. I mean, it's not something that we've seen.
I know there's no guarantees, but I, yeah, just curious, is it really, really working?
Yeah, and on that note, what I will tell you is that the Lincoln version is different. It is more robust, it is more allowable for flexibility on the landowner. There isn't the right to change and increase use, though, on the other ag overlays that we've seen. The city of Lincoln has taken it a step further, I think, you know, in addressing the citizen concerns on the firearms, which is not allowed in these other two examples, even though that is a real need to have that ability to use firearms for euthanasia and for other nuisances. But in any case, it is commendable what the city's done, and after the approval and formation of Village 5 ag overlay, taking it a step further and doing the firearms ordinance that helped address those missing pieces on annexation that would have been removed, should that not have been done.
Thank you. I think I've had my questions answered for now. Based on what I've seen and heard, Lincoln has dotting all its i's and crossed all its t's, and I would love to hear if anybody can point out something to me that's different. That's my comments for now, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to my commissioners in the virtual realm here. So Commissioner Gilbert, any questions at this time?
No, I don't have any additional.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
No, I don't have anything additional either.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Manning?
I do have a question. First, I do want to say I do appreciate the nice work by the city. I do feel like with our city attorney and our staff, they have done quite a bit to try to accommodate the sensitive annexation, especially for our ag neighbors that are tied up in this thing, when you talk about what we've done with the gun ordinance and different If this were several years ago, I probably would have voted against Village 5 for several reasons. Some of them the judge ruled on, and I know today, a lot of this stuff has to do with with, it's in accordance with the judge's recommendations. That being said, my question, I want to go back to Steve if you can answer another question, and just clarify. So the ag overlay, which I think is a great thing for this, for this area, what you said, and I just want to clarify it, is that it can be overturned by a simple future city council because it's in, because it's an ordinance? So a council could change their mind one day and overturn that?
The, yeah, an ordinance can be adopted, rescinded, or modified by vote of council at a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. One other question I have within the ag overlay with what is now, not about in the future, but the way it's written now, is the ag overlay and the rights to these agricultural families or property owners, is it transferable if and when they were to sell the property?
It, for future, if it's based on the ordinance, the ag overlay and the general development plans, again, as approved by Village Five, as recommended approval by Village, for Village Seven, it's applicable to any current and future property owners upon annexation. So it's, it would, it is equivalent of city law. So any new property owners would still be subject to the same allowances in the overlay. If a development agreement was entered into voluntarily by the property owner and, and the prop, and the current property owner, that language would be within that development agreement to ensure that it is, it runs with the land and it would be available for successor property owners.
In these developer agreements, what is the term on these agreements? What are we offering these landowners from a term standpoint?
Well, there's, technically, there's two potential development agreements. There's a development agreement that was entered into by the city and Richland communities for, so for issues that are directly related to the development of the Plan Area A, not the, not an agricultural continuation, but the future development consistent with the specific plan, similar to the development agreements that we've entered into with 12 Bridges, Village One, Village Seven, Special Use District B, that put out the requirements for future development, the actions that need to be taken by the developer, the actions that need to be taken by the city, vested rights by the developer and the city for a period of time to ensure that the infrastructure and development occurs consistent with the master plans for that area. That is different than the non-development agreement, where is, which is, the draft that was written is primarily focused on continuation of agricultural rights for that individual property. The city is not, the city's portion of that or ask of the development agreement is only for infrastructure improvements that may be associated in or near the property owner if, if they are a part of that master plan. But outside of that, there are no takes or fee requirements or any type of obligations to these property owners, to the city.
Appreciate that. To follow up on that, but from a term standpoint, with what we're offering these landowners in this non-development development agreement, what are we offering? Is there an expiration on these agreements? Is there a time term on them?
A traditional development agreement?
Commissioner Manning, go ahead, Steve.
Christine, if you'd like to answer, I can, I can answer on a traditional one. We, there is no set time limit. Traditionally, cities enter into development agreements for 20 years and usually have one five-year extension, because the assumption of that development agreement is going to terminate upon buildout of that specific plan area, so you try, it tries not to run forever. There's no purpose of a development agreement if development has occurred. And then, but for this type of non-development agreement, the terms would be specific to that negotiation.
And I, and I concur with that, Mr. Professor. Commissioner Manning, I don't have the documentation in front of me, and it's been a couple of years now since I've looked at it. They were extended quite a while ago, but my recollection was, the initial term was 20 years, and then there were options to landowner for five or 10 years, and a couple of options extended. So that's the best I can do right now.
I appreciate that.
Just, just, yeah, the intent of it from the city was not to put, was not to create an early expiration.
Right, okay. And I'm glad I asked that, because I wanted to give you an opportunity to, to share that. I've lost my train of thought on it. Well, I will, I'll end my questioning there, and I do appreciate it. I appreciate everything we're doing to try to accommodate them. I do have my last question. Everything we're doing to accommodate the ag overlay, is there a way, what, is there anything we can do so that a simple city council vote in the future could not eliminate something that we're working so hard to do to accommodate our ag neighbors? Is there anything else we can do?
Non-development agreement.
The, the agreement that we have extended to some of the individuals who are suing us over this litigation, it is the non-development development agreement, which basically takes the ag overlay, makes it recordable against the property so that it runs with the land, and that means that the city council cannot, in the future, usurp that right, because it now runs with the land.
And just to clarify, it was offered to other property owners in Village Seven that had concerns, it wasn't just to the one property owner.
I appreciate everything.
Correct.
I also understand the concern with the landowners. At one side, we've got this ag overlay, which we've, we've promoted very well as a city that we're doing all the right things, but in the end, it's a simple vote by a city council that could all go away, right? I know that we're trying to address that with these, with these non-development development agreements, which in turn means the ag overlay is kind of useless anyways if we just did those. But I, I guess the other issue I would have, which is not a question, and I'll end on this comment, is that there is an expiration on those agreements. So I am, this is all new to me from my meeting with, earlier this week, when I met with Richland, I wasn't aware of these details. And I don't know, that's concerning to me, that, that there's a way out, basically. And all along, I thought the sag overlay was pretty, was pretty solid. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manning. Do you think you have another comment?
I just like to clarify, so if, if, if I'm a landowner and I'm farming and I have an agreement with the city that is to last 20 years, and at the end of 20 years, I have a five or 10-year option to renew, if the ordinance changes during that, I still have my agreement, right?
You have your vested rights at the time of entering into the development agreement.
So I have 20 years, if you change, you change the city ordinance, that's too bad, I still am protected for my 20 years.
Yes, and I, and I, and I
I just want to make sure I understood that correctly.
And I want to make sure that it's, you know, there, there's nothing, there's no such thing as a simple change of a city regulation. There, you know, there is analysis and hearings and public participation, so if the council did bring forward a change to the specific plan, general development plan, including the ag overlay, there would be sufficient public outcry to
There would be required public hearings, just like there is for any ordinance change.
But it is, but Commissioner Manning is correct, it is a simple majority vote. And also, one thing I wanted, I wanted to clarify, and it, it is only relevant to the Village Seven remnant area, is that the ag overlay is part of their mitigation program because it allows for the continuation of the Williamson Act. So it would be very difficult to eliminate that from those remnant areas.
Because it's in SEQA mitigation.
We would have to find an acceptable viable legal alternative to meet the intent of that mitigation measure, which would be to allow the continuation of the Williamson Act, which without the ag overlay would not occur.
Thank you for that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to make any comments.
Thank you. I don't have a big presentation tonight. That was done in 2017 and 2018. I appreciate the work that the city's put into this project and the annexation, the application of the ag overlay to Village Seven, I think was a very smart thing by the city to do that. It was, it was not necessary, but I think it was a smart thing to do. Village Five is in, is in position tonight to take one step forward out of many, many, many more steps in the future. So tonight, it's about fixing and recertifying those two chapters of the EIR. Luckily, there was severability from the judge decided, nothing else with the plan goes away, gets invalidated, but it is, there is two pieces in there that got addressed, and I think it was proper. And I could appreciate the system in California, while it, it is frustrating at times, it is the process we have to go through. With that, though, we have a Village Five plan, and also Village Seven could be incorporated to as proposed, that will have, you know, which will show for the orderly growth of the city. It's not going to happen overnight, but Village Five has a tremendous amount of diversity that adds to the city for the long haul, and not just a short-term horizon. It's not just homes, we love to talk about the homes, but there's 4 million square feet of, of commercial space here, of two interchanges. We have areas for, for, for new town squares and, and, and sub-villages within this, this 4,000-acre area. And so, you know, we're excited to be here tonight. We have many more times in front of you over the, over the coming decades as we design recenters, as you saw earlier tonight, and subdivision maps from, from other applicants. Those will all come in the future. Tonight, it's about recertifying those, those two chapters, moving on to city council. Hopefully, we get your support here tonight and move on to LAFCO where they could vet out the fiscal soundness to the plan. But again, appreciate all the work that's been done by staff, commission and council in the past, and happy to answer any questions from you guys.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public within the room as we sit that would like to speak on this item?
I actually have two, Chair.
Thank you.
First is Tom Endury.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tom Endury, CEO of Lincoln Area Chamber of Commerce. The chamber supported Village Five, a specific plan, when it was approved by the Planning Commission in November of 2017 and the City Council in January 2018. Of course, that's before my time here, but anyway, we've supported Village Five because it carries out the city of Lincoln's general plan and complements the existing Lincoln community, promotes economic growth for the city of Lincoln by providing significant new business opportunities and a range of housing choices, new schools, and a huge regional park complex. And I'm sure there's quite a bit of open space in there, too. Protects landowners who want to continue farmer ranching operations that we were just discussing, and helps Lincoln to become an even more attractive destination here in South Placer for residents and businesses to come. Promotes convenient mobility and links well with the other villages and all the existing areas of Lincoln. The chamber feels strongly that we need to protect and build the Lincoln's current competitive, competitive advantages, and while enabling growth that will help us to become an even more dynamic community in the future. Getting Village Five annexed into the city is critical next step and to bring it, to bring it to life. On behalf of the chamber, I ask you support the proposed annexation and recommend approval to the city council. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stan Nader.
Commissioner McKinney, Commissioners, my name is Stan Nader. I reside in the 12 Bridges neighborhood. I'm a frequent attender to LAFCO, that's the Local Agency Formation Commission. Reason I have an interest in what they do there is for the many years I was on the city council, I represented the city on LAFCO two different times. One of the responsibilities of LAFCO is to, every five years, the cities within Placer County have to have a, excuse me, municipal service review. That's where the cities demonstrate that they're providing adequate services to their citizens. I would submit to you that Lincoln has a challenge in that area. During July 4th, there was a significant number of service calls to our fire department, to the point that, and to many of the calls, the first units that responded were Cal Fire and Rockland. I spoke with the representative from the Lincoln Firefighters Association, and he said, "They are overwhelmed. They have not been given any additional staffing for boots on the ground as firefighters on a truck, and yet we're adding more and more population." I believe that Lincoln needs to maybe take a timeout and give themselves a chance to demonstrate that they can provide services to their citizens. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Yes, Mike Garabedian.
Mike Garabedian, Heal Lincoln. About the agricultural issue, besides renewing the Williamson Act contract every 10 years for another 10 years automatically, they could, the farmers can consider an agricultural conservation easement, also protected by the same state constitutional provision of enforceable restrictions. So we're opposed to this annexation, both annexation efforts. We know we have an inadequate funding of police services, inadequate funding of fire services, city stormwater system without even a map for it, a vast neighborhood park deficit, an unfriendly staff and city council action majority on existing neighborhood parks, no park master plan with public input, absent state of the park, state of, the state of, or the state of knowledge for doing park planning, and so forth. But the list goes on because of the audits and so forth. So here's, here's the finding that LAFCO has to make. It has to make a finding that the change in organization, quote, "provides accountability for community service needs and financial resources." You tell me how the city could possibly do that with an annexation, especially without the municipal services review, ancient one, you know, April 2010. So all LAFCOs have a state constitutional problem. Well, if somebody wants to hear about legal issues, okay. So in 1964, the state legislature allocated to cities, to LAFCOs, that's when they were created, the ability to change boundaries. Now, there's nobody on there for representing the state interest, that's one constitutional problem. Now, in 2000, there was the, the Commission on Local Governance in the 21st Century. I followed that, went to some of their meetings, and they did one thing, they added special district representatives. Not far enough. Now, there are key annexation policies in the law, but another issue is who's on the LAFCO? When the Board of Forestry was dissolved by the courts, it was dissolved because they were, everybody was in the forest industry, which is the time of forestry, I know something about that. So having a body made up of nothing but local government brings up that same legal commission. And then the LAFCO reform bill had something wonderful in it, that would allow the creation of spheres of influence, LAFCO spheres of influence in unincorporated areas. Unfortunately, it was amended out at the last minute. Now, people living in Lincoln, or who are going to move in later, or who are outside of the city now and subjectively, subjectively to being affected by this, they, they have, are, could be concerned about how these, how the elections take place. The LAFCOs are permitted to draw them so that the election will always come out in favor. Now, what kind of constitutionality is that? So the impacts of this sprawl project here could have a significant impact on the environment, especially because it doesn't deal with the Williamson Act. especially because it doesn't deal with the Williamson Act, sorry, doesn't deal with the LAFCO law issues. The various findings have to be made to approve that. I don't think that this project now, that there's anything the city could do except to study, study the fiscal issues and get on top of them. And the one thing this commission should ask is for, before you act on it, to get a new municipal services review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other speakers? I see a hand in the back. Please, come on up.
Thank you, Albert Schreiber. Can I have five minutes?
No.
We have three minutes is the time. Thank you.
Okay. Albert Schreiber, Moore Road. To clarify several items that were brought up tonight, the Ag Overlay isn't worth the paper it's written on because, as we've talked about, you can sugarcoat it all you want, but it can be dissolved by a future council. As far as can you change, you know, what type of farm are you doing? The answer to that is maybe. If you have a non-conforming business, say I have 100 cows, and that's non-conforming, depending on who's in the city, I can't change to 101. I can't get rid of all those cows one year and bring them back. So, there are exceptions to what you can and can't do. So, as far as the non-development agreement, the reason nobody signed it is because it sucks, okay? It wasn't written by somebody in Ag. It was written by the city attorney and Mr. Prosser, I guess, but it wasn't, that's why nobody signed it. It's garbage, in my opinion. Okay. As far as, since Village 5 started and they wanted to ram through the remainder of Village 7, by the way, I'm the largest landowner in the remainder of Village 7 that hasn't been annexed, and nobody's come to talk to me, just for clarification. So, as far as what we've been told is, over and over, and only one answer, why Village 7 has to be sucked in with Village 5, and that is because you can't leave an island. That's one answer. Can't leave an island for years. That's the only answer, okay? They pulled out part of Rockwell Lane, and they're going to leave an island. So, the only reason, so either I can stay an island if they can stay an island or vice versa. So, I'm not sure why you can switch it whenever you feel like it, Mr. Prosser. To answer some of your questions, Mr. Lyons, how do you make this a legal thing? Because I know you're on that legal thing. No mention tonight of the appeal. We should have the appeal by the end of the year, but yet, like the city always does, you're shoving this through now, and just like the whole presentation tonight was based on going to court, and you didn't follow the sequel rules. You didn't follow them when we came to you four years ago. You approved this project. We sued. The court said, yep, you're right. So, here we are. And now, it's an appeal, and here we are again. And you're going to, you know, my guess is you're going to rubber stamp it, the majority of you, because that's what you do. And then, you know, we'll be right back in this position six months from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman McKinney, and your fellow commissioners. Phil Rodriguez with the Lewis Group of Companies. I think you read in your staff report, the Lewis, that's us. We're the 500-acre landowner of the majority of Village 7. So, I'm here tonight just to monitor and watch, make sure that there aren't any ill effects associated with that. I'm neutral on this, if it moves forward or not, but in the event that it does, if you recommend approval to the City Council, and the City Council approves that, I suggest, highly recommend that you utilize the tax sharing agreement that we worked with the city and the county for Village 7 specifically, for the Village 7 piece of the annexation. The county will most likely want to have a different tax sharing agreement for Village 5. That's typically what they do. They weigh that on the amount of commercial space and residential space. It's in a specific plan to determine what that tax split's going to be and what future sales tax might be. So, the basis of our tax sharing agreement, we worked with the county and the city on, was just specific to Village 7. We just chose to only annex our property and leave the others out. So, my recommendation is, if you do move forward with this, to utilize that tax sharing agreement for consistency within Village 7, basically. So, it's, that tax base is based upon the same element, all of, it's all 700 acres rather than 500 acres on one agreement and 200-plus acres on another agreement. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public in the room right now that would like to Do we have anybody online? Thank you.
Hello. This is Jim Hoffman with Friends of Auburn Ravine. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, Friends of Auburn Ravine is a local nonprofit organization, all volunteer organization. We try to look for balanced solutions that are good for the people in the area and also for the fish and wildlife. So, we're always trying to consider all those issues as we look at various development options and other activities in the city and in western Placer County as a whole. One thing we like about Village 5 and 7 is the provision for open space. There's a lot of open space there. It looks to us like the developer recognizes the fact that open space and parks and trails actually are amenities that help them to sell the properties and actually improves property value over time. In regard to the Ag Overlay, it appears to us that maybe there needs to be some improvement of the non-development development agreement, but that concept, we think, is quite solid. And along with the overlay and the non-development development agreement, that that will protect Ag interests in the area quite well. If that was, you know, if we found out that became untrue somewhat in the future, we would be loud advocates for Ag in the areas west of Lincoln. Also, we like the fact that there's a significant habitat arrange, you know, set-asides for the fish and wildlife along Markham Ravine and along Auburn Ravine. So, it looks to be real good to us. The fact that PCCP is now codified in the document is an excellent thing. And we like the fact that, over time, this development will actually improve property values all across Lincoln because of the qualities that it offers, you know, to the community. So, in general, we're supportive of it. We've still got concerns about the Ag Overlay. We'd like to see that nailed down, but I think that's eminently doable. If there's some concerns that the agricultural community has regarding the nature of that non-development agreement, seems to me that could be blended into that, and we'd have something that would meet their needs as well as the cities and the developers. So, thank you very much. We're generally in favor of this, and we appreciate all the time that's been spent on this. One thing that we will say is that there have been some situations, like with Village 1, where everything looked good. Looked good to the city, looked good to the county, looked good to, I shouldn't say the county, they weren't really part of that at that time, but looked good to the city, looked good to the wildlife agencies, looked good to us. But as things developed on Village 1, the actual grading plan for the floodway did have some problems, and in fact, still does have some problems. So, I would encourage all parties involved to take a real close and collaborative look at things as they develop to make sure problems are not coming to the fore as they did on Village 1 where there's a flood risk and also potential damage to fish and wildlife resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised? I do not. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearing for public comment. And I would like to go back to Commissioners for any additional questions, and I will again start with Commissioner Cross.
Yeah. Something that I've been listening to tonight bothers me, and that is I keep hearing about the lawsuit that the city lost. And I think I'd like to address that because, as I understand it, in the lawsuit, there were like 17 points or 17 charges made, 15 were dismissed, and two were found actionable, and the city and developer followed up with it. So, I think that should be pointed out because all we've heard is the city got sued and the city lost. Actually, the city did a pretty good job of defending itself and its position and have addressed those two points. The other thing is, I take offense to what one of the members of our community were saying. If we were a rubber stamp organization, we wouldn't have been sitting here for an hour and 20 minutes taking testimony and listening to people and giving people the chance to speak. So, I take offense to what you said, sir. I am not a rubber stamp person. I listen to the details. I study what's going on and vote my conscience based on the guidelines that have been given to us by our City Council, which is our 50-year general plan. Basically, we're here to determine whether or not they're coloring within the lines, not whether or not I like the plan or not whether or not I'm going to buy a house there or take action, but are they following the rules that have been set down by the city? Thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah. So, I know three, a little over three years ago, I voted no on this project for, you know, various reasons, and I'm happy that, you know, during that time, the city and applicant have been able to rectify a lot of those. I'll be honest, I was feeling really comfortable coming into this meeting today to support it. I want to support it. It seems like a great project, you know, overall, but I guess with the new information that I guess I've heard tonight, you know, related to the anti-development agreements with term limits and so forth, I don't feel like I can fully be on board yet. It's something I want to be on board for. Seems like it's a good option, but I still feel like there's some kinks to still be worked out within that area.
Okay. Commissioner Lyons, do you have any more comments, Commissioner Johnson?
No. No, thank you.
Sorry. I should have asked if you were concluded.
I'm good. Thanks.
Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you. I've gone through all of the legal matters before us. Many of the things that have been brought up tonight are not legal matters before us. Among them, for example, is fiscal matters. That's actually prohibited from the Planning Commission. It's, that's a City Council and LAFCO issue. We cannot act on fiscal matters in the Planning Commission. From everything I can see, the city has done everything it can do and can be done to follow the legal requirements, the legal guidelines, and gone beyond that to meet, to meet and extend things that even others who have done Ag overlays haven't done, to make it more flexible, to do firearm ordinances that others don't do. I think the city has done everything that is possible to be done. Can you restrict future councils? Of course not. Any more than Trump could prohibit Biden from doing something, or Obama would prohibit Trump from doing something. That's just not possible. That's just the nature of living in a country where we're governed by public representatives. The decisions are made in the ballot place, and so, it looks to me like everything has been covered, and I will be voting yes on this.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert.
Being quite new on the City Planning Commission, but having spent a total of about 18 years on city councils in California and having been in the development field as a lender with a major financial institution, I got myself up to speed on this as quickly as I could. I've spoken to a lot of people in the community, including the proponent that's put this before us tonight. And not that, not that the score means anything, but people that I have a lot of confidence in, one of them said, don't go forward on this, and he had his reasons, and six said, go forward on this one. So, I just wanted to share that. That's not, that's not something that's going to make me make my decision, but that's the sense of what's going out, going on out in the community. This has been around quite a while, and there is always the possibility that a decision that's made by a governing body, and in this case, whatever we do, it will go to the council, and the council will approve it or disapprove it. If they approve it, someone can always, in the future, decide that they didn't like the decision, and if they can count to three and get three council members, they could overturn the decision that would be made. So, you take a little bit of a chance. Property owners, developers, builders, you all take chances. Overall, I think this is a very, very integral part of the city, and I may not be around to see it fully developed because it's going to take many years, but I can, I want to compliment our staff. They came well-prepared. They've obviously done a lot of work the last several years getting over hurdles. And so, you know, the perfect project has never been put before me, but based upon what our challenge is as Planning Commissioners, I intend to vote in favor of this. I think it's good for Lincoln, and it'll be something that will help Lincoln in the next couple decades. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Hutchinson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I concur with Commissioner Cross's comments, Commissioner Lyons's comments, and Commissioner Gilbert's comments. I believe this project does represent smart growth principles. Like anything, nothing is perfect. There are challenges, but I, but I will vote in support of this, of going forward with this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. And Commissioner Manning.
Yeah. So, in some of the public comments, I felt a little disdain for some of the folks who have been helping organize this project from the city and from the developers. And I just want to say that I do genuinely believe that everyone's doing what they can to do what's best for people today. And I think the Ag Overlay idea, I think there's some, I think it's sincere. I think the people in the city have done what they can to accommodate a lot of the objections that we've heard. For one, you know, developers sometimes get a bad name. I met with them this week, and I have to say I had a pleasant meeting with them, and it was a fantastic meeting. They answered all my questions. I left with a lot of confidence, I think, in what they would do for this, for this development. You know, developers are partners in ours, and there's good ones and there's bad ones, let's face it, but they're partners that help us get to where we need to get as a city. So, I really think they were genuine in their efforts to accommodate everybody, the Ag families and all that that have been there. I guess the challenge I have that's come up today and tonight really rests on, we put so much effort in this Ag Overlay, but then to learn that it really isn't very solid. And where I come from, a deal's a deal, right? I think today's government, everything Steve Prosser's doing, I think Christine's doing what she can do to try to accommodate. I think today's government, I trust, we all want to do the right thing. So, this idea that this is a, you know, that there's some, something behind this that we're just going to pull it away from, from the people in today's, this group, I don't believe that. My issue is, what is tomorrow's government? A simple majority, when we're putting so much effort into making this right, but all that effort could just be swept away? This non-development development agreement, I love the idea. I love the fact that we're heading down that road, but there was a comment made, and nobody signed it. I think that's eye-opening for us. If nobody signed it, then maybe we need to do better. And so, my position on Village 5 isn't that I'm against it. We heard from the head of our Chamber of Commerce that says Village 5 will do so much for our city, right? I feel the same way. I think there's a lot it could do, but I don't think we're there yet. And I think we are, I would like to see, I think we can do better on this Ag Overlay. We heard from the gentleman from the We heard from the gentleman from the, what was it, the Placer County Open Space Group, and even he said, there needs to be improvement to that agreement. I'd like to see us do better. And so I would push on our staff to continue down the road we're going and to do better and to get these families. Because a 20-year term, some of these people have this property, these properties before, in the 1800s, early 1900s, four generations, and we're gonna give them 20 years? I think we can do better. And that'll conclude my comments.
Okay. Well, I have a couple clarifying questions based on excellent questions and comments I've heard from fellow commissioners. And on the non-development development agreement, that is not before us this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, like any agreement, I would assume that any development agreements, non-development or development agreement, would need to come before signature to the council, the Planning Commission, or council for approval. Is that correct?
Certain ones.
That is correct.
Certain ones both, some, something similar to the, what, the non-development agreement would more than likely go directly to councils, it's not, it's not related directly to development.
So it's not gonna be signed in the city manager's office. It's going to be in the public at some point. A development agreement, before it's signed, can still be negotiated. Is that correct?
It's a voluntary agreement between two parties.
So while the terms may not, you know, we're sitting here talking about terms on a non- development development agreement that aren't even before us this evening, that still have an opportunity to be modified by each party that would be signatory to a non-development development agreement. So while, you know, the terms of 20 years have been said, maybe it's 30 years. Maybe in the negotiation process, you know, we heard that some people feel that the development agreement may not be well-crafted. That is between the city and the party that would be signing it to negotiate the terms of that agreement, and there's still opportunity for those things to be changed and to be made. So while we're looking at the project tonight and what we have, these resolutions before us, the non-development development agreements are not part of that. So. Correct, sure. I think it's important for all of us to recognize that before we make our vote, that there is still opportunity to do better. And I do feel that our staff, the developers, have worked really hard over many years to try and craft some very creative solutions to meet multiple objectives of all parties. And as Commissioner Hutchinson said, it's never perfect, right? This is, these are difficult agreements, but people have gone, come to the table in good faith to try and do the right thing for everybody, all parties to be. And yes, you know, an ordinance can be overturned by another council, as Commissioner Lyons eloquently stated. That is the state of being part of a republic and a democratic government. And it is the ballot box, it is being in front of our electeds and decision-makers to make yourself known. So I do appreciate those who have been here this evening to provide comment to us, whether you were here in person or virtually. I also want to thank the staff for the staff report, the presentations. I felt that they were very well-done. The environmental consultant, ESA, some, a lot of work. The documents are long, and you can tell they were done very well in a very short period of time, quite honestly. When I look at the schedule, I was surprised at the schedule and the amount of time that they had to get this done. And so I want to thank staff and the consultants who have worked on this. And so I think that this project is important for the city. We talk about the need for new services. That's a fiscal issue, the reality of which is that the city needs more revenue in order to pay for services. And revenue comes with rooftops, and it comes with commercial properties and business properties that will help add to our general fund revenues to help provide those services that we do need. And it will take time. In the interim, as I understand, some of these services, like police, will be provided by Placer County. There are agreements in place to accommodate services. It's not perfect, but we need these types of growth and income into our general fund to provide those long-term for the greater good of the city. So I do intend to invoke, vote yes for this project. And those are my comments, and unless we have any other comments from any commissioners, I would like to move forward with each of the resolutions.
That's cool.
Okay, so we're first considering, we have six resolutions before us. The first one is Resolution 2021-25, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln recommending certification of the partial recirculated final environmental impact report for the Village Five specific plan project, making findings concerning mitigation measures, recommending adoption of a mitigation monitoring plan, recommending the adoption and making a finding a fact, and recommending adoption of a statement of overriding considerations in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act for the Village Five specific plan project. I have a motion.
I'll move.
Second?
Uh, second.
So I have a motion and second. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
And Chair McKinney. Yes. Okay, we are to our second resolution, Resolution 2021-26, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Lincoln recommending approval of an addendum to the Village Seven environmental impact report for the Village Seven specific plan.
I'll move.
Second.
May I have a roll call? Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
Chair McKinney. Our third resolution is Resolution 2021-27, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending City Council adoption of an ordinance approving the pre-zoning for the remaining portion of the Village Seven specific plan project area, assess or parcel numbers as listed in the resolution. So I'm seeking a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Roll call. Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
And Chair McKinney. Yes. Our fourth resolution, Resolution 2021-28, a resolution recommending approval by the Planning Commission to the City Council to adopt an ordinance amending the Village Seven general development plan to establish an agricultural overlay zone.
Move adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
Chair McKinney. Yes. Our fifth resolution, 2021-29, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the City Council authorize initiation of the annexation proceedings for a portion of the Village Five specific plan area. I'll move approval.
Second.
Roll call. Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
And Chair McKinney. Yes. And our final resolution, Resolution 2021-30, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the City Council authorize initiation of the annexation proceedings for the remaining portion of Village Seven.
Move adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Manning.
No.
And Chair McKinney. Yes. Okay, thank you. That concludes Agenda Item Eight, our public hearings. We are now to general business. Do we have any general business items?
We do not.
Okay, that concludes Item Nine. Item 10 is Commissioner Comments, and I will start again with Commissioner Cross.
No comment.
Commissioner Gilbert.
No.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
No.
Commissioner Johnson.
No comments.
Commissioner Lyons.
Nothing to say.
Commissioner Manning.
No comments.
And likewise, I have no comments, except it's great to see people in person. It's nice, I, it's a pleasure. Been a long time. And we are now to item 11, informational items from staff. Mr. Prosser.
I have one informational item, and I figured out I did a small error earlier today when I allowed our assistant planner, Scarlett Marr, to leave after her item, because I knew the length of time that the rest of the agenda would incorporate. And so she'll have to watch this, that I am unhappy. It's unfortunate, but I am totally supportive of an announcement. Scarlett Marr, our assistant planner, her last day is Friday. This will be her last Planning Commission meeting. She is moving on to other opportunities, and we wish her well. She's been with the city for two years, hired as an assistant planner, relocated from Southern California. It's been an honor and pleasure to see her grow as a planner and present to the Planning Commission and Council, and she will be missed, and it will impact, you know, there will be a hole in our department that we will need to fill. So I'm happy for her, but I wanted to wish her the best.
Thank you. Likewise, she's done a great job presenting before us many times in her staff reports, and so I know she will be missed. So thank you, Scarlett, when you watch this, for your service to the city and to us as the Planning Commission. And with that, we are adjourned.